Okay, it is seven o'clock. And I am going to open the meeting. And we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I will join the meeting shortly, once I get there. We have minutes from the April 10th and April 27th meetings. Have you all had a chance to read through them?
Mm-hmm.
Open to a motion to approve them?
Motion.
Thank you, Steve. Second?
I'll second.
Somebody needs to turn their... The other option is to go out and come back in and not join with audio. FYI. You got it? You muted. Okay, good. Thank you. The important technical things that we... Oops. Oh, is the agenda not in the website? Okay, try one more time. Sorry.
It's not online.
Yes, I think you might have. Agenda. There it is. Poligies. Just getting connected. Nope, that's not it. Oh, well, all right. I'll figure it out in a minute. The next item on the agenda is public hearings, and we will do them separately. We will start with Local Law A of 2023, and this is a local law to permit internally illuminated window signs in the business district. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Thank you, Steve. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So the public hearing for internally illuminated window signs is open. I would just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. This is an opportunity for you to share your comments. It is not intended to be a back and forth, so if you have questions, we will take those under advisement and respond at a later date. And again, the purpose of the public hearing for these laws is to hear from anyone who's interested so that you can share your perspective and whether or not you have any thoughts about how we might change them and whether you think it's a good idea. Is there anyone who is here to comment on the window signs? Yes, come on up. And if you would stand at the podium, there's a microphone there. You just need to turn it on. It's a little switch on the side. And then you just need to speak into the microphone, and eventually it does start working.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Arlene Harkins, and I own the Historic Village Diner in Red Hook. People often judge a business by the quality and appearance of signage. All businesses in the village have supported the village with tax payments and other various expenses, like the new sewer system. Ben's and the diner have been supporting the village for over 40 years and also the community. All businesses in this community help all the people here in one way or another. The myth that neon is dangerous is just that. Neon contains two gases, neon and argon. These gases are found in the air that you breathe in, not toxic to the human body, and neon signs do not produce any X-rays. Our open signs tell people welcome and thanks for coming. It is the most effective way to generate foot or traffic that we need. The definition to illuminate is to share the light and brighten. Isn't that what you want all the businesses in Red Hook to do? Share a light on our community and show everything that we have to offer for people coming through. Please don't try to dull our light and let alone turn it off. Thank you.
Anyone else for the illuminated sign? I do have two emails. One I have in front of me here. Elena Erber, are you here? Is there anyone online? Anyone waiting to come in? She did say that while I plan to be at the hearing this Monday evening, I would like to say in this email that I fully support the direction of the newly proposed changes to the village zoning laws that permit illuminated open signs and store windows and allow for the keeping and for the next part. I'll read that in the next part. We also have an email, which I don't know if I have in my packet. Yes, thank you. And this is from Todd Baywright. Dear Mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook, I'm writing to express the Baywright family's strong and complete support to amend the law to permit and allow internally illuminated open signs. We agree with your maximum dimension of 1.5 square feet and that said signs shall have a constant intensity, no flashing, intermittent or moving lights, and only illuminated during business hours. Thank you very much for your attention and consideration to this very important topic. Regards, Todd Baywright. Are there any other comments related to illuminated signs? Going once, going twice. I would like a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And just to share with all of you, we have submitted both the laws to the county, so Dutchess County Planning, as we are required to do. They have 30 days, and so their 30 days is not up. We have not yet received their comments, and so we are not able to act on these laws this evening. And the public hearing is an important part of the process, so we will not be doing any further action this evening, but we are, here we are for the public comment.
Are we going to be the public hearing open, or will we close the public hearing?
We're going to close the public hearing.
Will we close?
Yes. Because we are required to act in 60 days, which I'm fully expecting that we'll be in position to proceed in June. And the next agenda item is Local Law B of 2023, a law to regulate animal husbandry, hens, and honeybees. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The public hearing on regulating animal husbandry, hens, and honeybees is open. Anyone who would like to make a comment, please do state your name and your address or the road that you live on and what municipality, if it's not the village. Come on up. The button on the side, if it's up, then it's on. There you go. That's it. Keep talking, and it'll start.
I'm Plina Malikin, 25 Fisk Street in the village. Thank you for working hard to create a new law. I know that takes a lot of effort, and I think we're probably the family that's pushing this, so thank you. We are grateful for the creation of this law and are hoping that there can just be some amendments in terms of thinking about the needs of animals and people. So we have a lot that's over four acres, and we have miniature goats. So in order for the goats to be happy, they need to be in a herd, and in order for them to do the work of grazing and keeping the brush, there needs to be more than just one or two goats. So the law right now is quite restrictive in terms of small animals, and so we've consulted with a lot of veterinarians and online sources and books. The amount of grazing that's needed for the kind of goats we have is 135 square feet. An acre is like over 40,000 square feet, so that's our one request. We're very happy with the rest of the parts of the law and are happy that our neighbors will be able to keep chickens and bees and all of that as well. I'm really exhausted, so I'm sorry. I'm not talking very well.
You're doing just fine.
Okay, thank you.
I do just have a question for you, since it's you. Have you looked at the setbacks? The setback requirements that's in the law?
Yeah, I'll leave a last adopted.
You just keep talking into it, and it will start. Yes, as long as it's on. If it's pushed up, you have to speak into it for a bit, and then it'll start working. I promise.
All right. At the risk of going off top...
First, if you can just start with your name.
My name's Paul Sturz. I live at 25 Fisk.
Thank you.
This is related to all the topics at hand. It's about open records and public notice. I think that it's very important, as everyone knows, to involve people with early and often notification of meetings. I think if you go online right now, there's still no agenda for this meeting that's posted. We attended a zoning board of appeals meeting, I believe it was on April 27th. There was no agenda printed for that. There were no minutes for that meeting or any of the previous meetings, as far as I can tell, and it just seems foundational to what we're all doing here together, so I just want to encourage us to do a better job. In terms of this new law about animal husbandry, you had asked about setbacks, and we were very impressed with the work that was done on protecting the quality of life for people in the village. The 200-foot setback, totally sensible. There's a minimum acreage requirement of two acres. That makes sense as well. Feed stored securely in metal containers. Animal waste and discarded food cleaned out of stalls once a week. All that stuff is important in terms of mitigating any kind of nuisances that could arise from animals, such as goats. I just want to make the point that we have 30 signatures from our neighbors saying that there is no nuisance with our animals. There are five of them right now. As Plina said, in terms of animal care, we find the limitation to one animal per one and a half acres to be overly restrictive. It doesn't make sense in terms of the sociability of those animals. And in terms of, you know, we don't think that going to two or three animals per 1.5 acres would really mean a nuisance to anyone. I do want to make the point that there's no danger of goats taking over the Village of Red Hook. There are 20 properties in the village that are more than two acres. The vast majority of them, 15 of them, are not residential. There are only five properties, including our own, that have, you know, grassy lots. Well, just to clarify that, there are some very large farm parcels. I think everyone knows about the Cookingham parcel on the north side of the village. There are a number of parcels that are owned by the village. There is a parcel owned by St. Christopher's Catholic Church. I won't bore you with all the details of that, but I just want to state that this is not going to change the makeup of the village in any significant way. I really doubt the other four homeowners who have more than two acres are itching to take care of goats. They take time and energy and money, and most people who have acreage are probably more interested in growing houses on their lots than goats. So there's going to be a limited effect. We're very, very pleased that some accommodation is made for the hens. That definitely seems like the more relevant and exciting option for people in the village. I think it totally makes sense, the accommodations that you've made for them, no roosters, for instance. The only issue we have with that as well is that it seems like past one acre, there's sort of like no distinction between one acre and four or seven. So we would hope that there would be some sort of math applied to if you had more than two or three acres. It just sort of dead-ends at 12 hens at an acre. So that would be our only comment on that. I think I've probably taken up my three minutes. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you. Next. Would anyone else like to speak? It's the public hearing for the local law on animal husbandry, hens, and honeybees. If you'd just state your name and where you live.
My name is Michael Rohatton. I live in Mylan. And I mentioned this at the ZBA meeting. As somebody who doesn't have any standing in the village, who is standing in the village and who, but loves this village, and I interact with it all the time. I just want to remind us of this dynamic of the rural nature of where we are, the charm of that and the value of it economically, personally. And in an abstract, you know, universe, these laws and ordinances have a certain arithmetic and a certain logic, but there are also people involved, and it isn't just this goat family. It's all of us. And I am personally delighted to go to Agway, which is a rural establishment, and that there is some feeling of that in that neighborhood. And I think those goats are absolutely perfect for that site. So this is all I have to say. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Elena Erber. I live at 24 Fisk Street. So I understand you read my letter.
I did.
And I just wanted to stand up and say that I care enough to be here in person and support the work that you're doing and how that affects our community with different things. I totally, you know, Paul's points about figuring out the details of how it really works are important to add into the mix of making this happen. But on both accounts, I know we're talking the animals right now, but also in terms of the signs.
Signs.
These are the right directions.
Thank you.
Hi.
State your name and where you live, please.
Jim Rogers. I live on Fisk Street, 5 Fisk Street. I don't have my contacts in, so you're all a blur.
There's a microphone there you can talk into.
Do I need to project?
If it's pushed up, then it's on.
Okay, am I on?
There you go.
Okay, great. I'm at 5 Fisk Street. I don't have my contacts. Everything's blurry except for the clarity of this thought. Thank you.
That's what a public hearing is all about.
Yeah, thank you. And she wasn't a plant. But anyway, thank you so much for taking this on, very timely. Obviously, these are complicated issues. All the hen owners are psyched to sort of come out of the shadows, you know? They're here. We're used to it, and that's great. And I know it's not easy. It's so hard slicing these issues exactly right to make the best place that we have. And I think we're really headed in the right direction and, you know, intersecting with the goat issue and giving a space for those goats. I do disagree a little bit if there could be a slight tweak to the acreage issue, just because I don't think that many parcels apply throughout the town. And if you're going to have one goat, you really should have two for lots of reasons. I know people probably covered, and so I just want to say I appreciate you taking it on, and I hope that you're open for a slight adjustment to just get it exactly where I hope it goes, and that's it. But I just wanted to thank you for taking it on.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
Is that what you mean, is you think there should be more animals per one and a half acre of available land when the plot is two acres or more?
Yes.
Or is it different?
Yes.
That's your statement?
That's my statement.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room?
I live in the town on Starbrook, but my children live in the village on Frailly and Benner. I'm also here in support of local law. I want to thank the board for taking this on to address a situation. I think it's particularly, thinking of children, it's important for them to develop a relationship with animals beyond household pets, to watch them be born, to nurture them as they grow, care for them when they're sick and injured, comfort them when they die, and develop a relationship to, you know, really also our food supply, in learning that food does not come from the store. So I really appreciate the town, or the village, rather, taking this on. I also think another thing that children learn here is, through caring for these animals, is humane treatment of animals. And along those lines, I do support the sort of reconsideration of the limitation on small animals, particularly for those that are herd animals. You know, I think you have ample evidence about the sociability needs for those. And again, we're talking about a small number of parcels that can, where these animals can be raised responsibly. And I think also you have Subsection D there for enforcement of any issues that arise for nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all right. You can just leave it there. Anyone else in the room? We have several emails as well, which I will not read all of them in full. We will have them available. The majority of them are in favor. Many of them are in favor in general. There are also several that mention the number of animals allowed in the, as it's stated in the law. Just double-check that and support mentioning the number. So we have one, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. We have 10 emails in support of the animal husbandry, et cetera, law. There are probably, there are three or four that specifically mention requesting an adjustment for the number of animals. We do have an email from Charlie Rubin, who lives on Prince Street. I'm writing to ask that you delay and reconsider your proposed law allowing various farm animals in the village. Quite simply, village residents live too close to each other for this to be allowed. Regarding chickens, I could end up with a chicken coop about 20 feet from my second-story window. I understand there will not be roosters, which is good, but chickens can still make noise up to about 70 decibels. I imagine that this noise will start early in the morning and be present for good portions of the day, every day, for as long as my neighbors may decide to own them. This could make for a significant decline in the quality of living at our home, as well as decreasing our property value and making it harder to sell our house. Regarding bees, my wife is allergic to them and could die if stung. Your new rule could allow for tens of thousands of bees just a few feet from our property line. The risks to her and the potential liability to the village in similar situations is simply not acceptable. Since none of my neighbors have two-acre parcels, I will leave the issue of larger animals to someone else. In summary, this is a very ill-advised law, which is apt to create all kinds of problems in our dense little village. I presume, and I hope before you vote on it, you will consider these serious risks. And sincerely yours, Charlie Rubin. So I wanted to put that one on the record, and we have that one already. Okay, and that's, so this night will be, there's no one online. And last chance? Okay. Thank you all very much for your commentary. Thank you for coming. I appreciate all the people who have sent in an email online as well, because we are here to represent all who live in the village, not just ourselves. And by, and Paul, I do appreciate your comments. I will tell you that we've been working very hard to have everything up. This is a particularly busy meeting, so I think normally the agenda is up well, or well, days in advance, anyway.
I think that was a computer issue. I definitely loaded it. I don't know where it went. I mean, it was there at one point, but we should talk at some point. Call, give a call, because I think you might be looking in the wrong place for the zoning minutes. All the minutes are up until the April meeting, end of April meeting for the zoning board.
And if it's hard to find, we also want to know that, because we want to make it as easy as possible for people to find.
It's absolutely hard to find. It might exist, but I'm not that...
Understood.
...into computers. I don't do it.
Understood. And I will just say in general, if you ever have a question, please don't hesitate to call or email the village. Info@redhooknyvillage.org or mayor@redhooknyvillage.org. And our phone number's 845-758-1081. Please call anytime if you can't find it on the computer. We are happy to help. Thank you. I don't think I've closed the public hearing. A motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Actually, this one actually I'd like to leave open. I think we have a significant question around the quantity of animals, and I think that we should discuss that. And if we're going to make a change, we will need to have another, we will need to continue the public hearing. So I'd like to make a...
We also need to discuss the setbacks a little more.
Fine, that's fine. So let's, I'd like a motion to extend the public hearing continuance, continue the public hearing to our next board meeting in June. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Charlie. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So the two items that we will be discussing that, and we will put out notice so that you all can comment as we look at it, is setbacks and quantity of animals. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. I do want to take this moment to acknowledge the passing of a former trustee, Jay Trapp. He was a longtime trustee, and before that, I believe he was the chair of the zoning board. And he passed away about a week ago, I believe. And as is our custom, we will leave a blank page in our minutes in his memory. It's just another acknowledgement of a longtime public servant, and a light went out when he left us, but perhaps he's organizing meetings in the next phase. The next item on the agenda is the Red Hook School District budget presentation, and we have Superintendent Janet Warden and we have budget guru Bruce Martin, Bruce, yes, here with us. Can you hear me? If anyone is interested in...
I can leave some of those up here, too.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Just as a side note, I did have chickens for a long period of time, and it did teach my daughter a lot.
Well, if you'd like to read the zoning law and give some comments, please do.
We're on the other side of the river, so. So we built our budget around our mission and our vision, and many of you know we have a radar profile of attributes we want our students to graduate with. But we have other budget priorities. First and foremost, we want to remain under the tax cap. Bruce will get a lot more into that, but that's, this budget presented is below the tax cap. We are looking at rightsizing the staff and programming. We are not adding any new staff. We are actually not filling four positions either through retirement or resignation. We're going to continue to support our two pre-K classes. As you know, we had one, now we have two. So we have 30 students that enter our pre-K program every year. We want to continue to support our mental health staffing. We added two social worker positions recently. That was last year. We want to continue to make sure that we can keep all of our mental health staffing district-wide. We want to preserve and expand our secondary courses. As you know, we established Future Farmers of America. We are creating a class called Food to Table, so we're looking at interdisciplinary classes. And we are continuing with our sequence in computer science by offering AP Computer Science A.
Just to interrupt you, maybe you do want to read the local log, because maybe you, the high school, which is in the village, wants to have some chickens.
What do you think, Bruce? Okay, I should never have said anything. We got to check with our insurance. Maybe a goat.
And actually, I just found out that most of the... And actually, I, I just found out that the, most of the playing fields around the high school are actually in the agricultural district.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go.
Very handy for growing crops.
There you go.
You can mow them with-
We're going to continue to expand our performing arts programming. We're doing that with internal staff.
Goat skipping.
We're going to continue to support our bilingual outreach and communication with the position that we have. We want to preserve that position. We want to continue to work with the School Resource Officer Program and the Red Hook Police Department. I'd like to say thank you all for supporting that program. I think it truly helps, I know Pat is over there, I know this truly helps people not have to worry about safety and security when they're teaching. I, I don't think that, I think you do know, but teachers really need to be able to focus on that. Principals need to be able to focus on education and teaching and learning. And having that position in our building has created that sense of security, as well as they do play on the playgrounds, so it does create that bond between police. So I do want to thank Pat for all his work, because I do think it's a model program that we have. I work with a lot of people in the, a lot of my colleagues, and they don't have that level of support. So we should all be able to feel very secure that our schools are in really good hands. We continue to upgrade our district facilities. Bruce will talk about how we're going to start this summer. You're going to see a lot of work happening from our $20 million bond, and we're going to start paying on that this year, too. But even in our own budget, we do a lot of upgrades in our facilities to keep them up to date. As you know, this is our second year having one-to-one laptops. I think we did an okay job. A few people needed to have it fixed a couple times, mostly the middle school kids. But this will be our second year, so that's going to take a lot of work, taking some from students and then redeploying. So we want to continue to make sure that we support that staff that's going to be doing that. So I'm going to turn it, turn it over to Bruce, and he's going to talk more about the numbers.
Thank you. So let me talk, let me start by talking for just a couple of minutes about where we are in the process, which is almost to the finish line, actually. We, we adopted this budget on April 12th at the board level, and we did that in the absence of a state-adopted budget this year, which meant that we had to do a little bit of speculation on what the state aid figure would be. At the end of the day, it was unchanged from the governor's proposal, so that means we were pretty close in our revenue projections. The state has since adopted their state budget. The board election is all set to go. Board petitions were done being accepted on April 17th. There are four candidates running for two positions, and it's both incumbents as well as two newcomers running for those two positions. We will have a separate election in June, on June 20th, for the seat vacated by Kevin Storres when he passed. So that is not on the ballot on May 16th. However, there will be a separate election in June for that purpose. And candidates will have to re, have petitions re-signed in order to participate on, on that one. We've already had the formal budget hearing, and I saw a few faces that are here tonight, there that evening as well, so I know you've heard this presentation before. There is a voter registration that happens this week on Wednesday in the 35 lobby at Mill Road School. If you do run into somebody that wants to vote next week, they do have to be registered, and there is one final opportunity in the Mill Road lobby on the 35 side between noon and 5 o'clock on Wednesday, May 10th. And then the budget vote itself will happen on Tuesday, May 16th, which is just a week from tomorrow. That happens from noon to 9:00 in the Mill Road 35 gym cafeteria, same location where we've historically voted in the last few years. And that is the statewide budget vote date as well. The expenditure budget, in a nutshell, the current-year budget is at $58.3 million. The proposed budget for next year is $60,277,000, or a 3.38% increase. On the revenue side, as I already mentioned, we had to do a little projecting to build the revenue state aid budget. We used a very slightly enhanced version of the governor's proposal, and the final deal is essentially the governor's proposal. So we're right on target with the state aid projection. The, the board considered initially a 4.95% tax levy increase to support the budget. However, they then decided to assign an additional $150,000 of fund balance in order to lower the year-over-year levy to 4.55% increase. The tax cap calculation for us comes to 4.96%. So we're about $152,000 below the tax cap with the proposed levy. We also are experiencing a couple of notable miscellaneous revenues. On the miscellaneous revenue side, we're finally earning interest again on money that we have that we haven't spent. For many years, we were earning about 10 basis points, or 0.10%. Now we can earn close to 5% in the 4.5, 4.3 quarters approaching 5% range on the allowable investments that we can put our money in when we haven't spent it yet. Another important miscellaneous revenue developing for the district is the non-residents whose parents pay tuition to place them in the Red Hook Central School District. And we have 11 or 12 of those this year, and Janet and I actually did a Zoom meeting this morning with another family considering that. So that has become still miscellaneous, but a notable revenue for the district. The, the, the property tax is proposed to go from $36.7 million to $38.4 million, or a 4.55% increase, again, below the 4.96% tax cap. Let me talk just a little bit more about the tax cap, so that folks understand what's happening with that this year. We have gotten used to thinking of the tax cap as a 2% tax cap. That isn't really a 2% tax cap, but usually results in a number somewhere in the 2% range. And so this year, there are a couple of things going on with the school district that will modify that. So first off, one of the factors in the tax cap is CPI. CPI is calculated in the tax cap based on the prior calendar year CPI, which for 2022 was 8% for the measure that we use.
I'm clarifying, that's the Consumer Price Index, correct?
The Consumer Price Index, yes. And we use one called the All Urban Consumer Price Index. It's calculated for the calendar year '22 at 8%. However, in the tax cap formula, they limit the growth based on CPI to 2%. So of our 4.96 in the tax cap, 2% of that is based on the CPI growth. A new thing for us, it's not new to the formula, but new because of the magnitude this year, is something called the tax base growth factor. The tax base growth factor represents real growth in the property base within the Red Hook Central School District. And when I say real growth, I mean, not my house used to be assessed at $300,000, and now it's assessed at $400,000, but real new buildings, real additions, real improvements, real new business openings within the Red Hook Central School District that have created new property value for tax levies to be spread over. So historically, that number for the school district has been between about 0.25% and maybe as high as 0.75%. That number this year is 1.32%. So substantial growth in the tax base, enabling tax dollars to be spread out over that tax base without having as substantial an impact on the, on the individual taxpayer. And then the final factor in the tax cap calculation is the concept of the debt service or capital exclusion. So back in February of 2022, the voters of the community came out and they supported a $22 million capital project, which involves windows, HVAC, roofs are the primary things happening. And we had said at the time that in the '23-'24 budget year, that would have about a 2% impact on the tax levy as the debt service came in on that capital project. So actually, as we go into '23-'24, the year-over-year change in the local share of capital costs has a 1.64% impact on the tax cap calculation. So putting those three factors together, 2% CPI, 1.32% tax base growth factor, and 1.64% already previously approved by the voters back in February of 2022, that's where that 4.96% tax cap calculation comes from. And again, the proposed levy is below that at 4.55%. Because of all of those factors, this would be a particularly difficult year for the, for the school district to be on a contingent budget. So a contingent budget happens in the event that we do not get a voter-approved budget on May 16th. The board would have the opportunity to put that budget, or a modified budget, up again on June 20th. If that one failed to gain voter approval, the board would then be obligated to, to prepare a contingent budget. That contingent budget would entail a dramatic reduction in the tax levy. Most equipment purchases by law would be eliminated. The ability of us to let the community use the building would be limited based on our need to collect additional dollars to support any identifiable expenses related to that. And a transfer to the capital fund that we do every year would have to be canceled. So that situation is, every year, we put $100,000 over into the capital fund, and we do a very minor capital improvement project. And immediately the following year, we get $64,400 of state aid back on that $100,000 expenditure. We only get that by doing it through that mechanism. And in a contingent budget, we would not be allowed to do that transfer to capital funds. So the facility issues would still exist. However, we would not be able to claim the $64,000 of state aid related to that. And then the really important factor is, this is the year that we need to increase the levy to support the already-approved capital project that was approved back in February of 2022. And if the, if the vote does not pass this year, we would be unable to both support the debt service that's already obligated, along with the growth in the, in the cost of putting the program on. So it would really be a very difficult year for the district to see a contingent budget. There are a lot of other items on the ballot this year, so in addition to the budget, there are the two board seats that I've already talked about. There's a board election going on. There is a bus and vehicle proposition for $470,000. If that passes, it will enable us to do two new full-size buses, one 30-passenger bus and one facility vehicle. It would be the van that we use for the courier. We are proposing that the, that the community consider a capital reserve, and I'll talk just a little bit more about that in a minute.
Bruce, before you move on to the capital reserve, just asking about the buses, is there any move towards any kind of electrification of the buses?
There is a move toward it, but it's not, it's not contemplated in the '23-'24 buses. So the '23-'24 buses will be unleaded gasoline. We have undertaken a couple of studies to examine the infrastructure necessary to have a fleet of electric buses. We've undertaken a study to examine which of our routes would be most amenable to an electric bus right out of the gate. We actually had borrowed from our bus dealer an electric bus. We had it for a week, and we used it a little bit on runs. So we are definitely doing the research, and we are definitely headed down the path. It is mandatory, actually, that by 2027, we begin purchasing electric buses, and that by 2035, our, our fleet be entirely electric. So we're looking to move in that direction, but not quite yet.
And if I remember correctly, you said that buses usually have a 10-year life?
We aim for a 10-year replacement cycle. We have not been able to meet that. We're typically more on a 13- to 14-year replacement cycle. And that actually, in my very limited understanding to this point, is the electric buses pretty clearly have a 10-year life cycle. So even once you get your fleet implemented, then you've, you've got to work even harder to stay on that replacement cycle, because it's my understanding that, as of today's technology, that that's, that's the useful life of an electric bus.
I'm also thinking about the buses that you're proposing to buy now.
Yep.
10 years from now is about the right time.
We are, yes, and so we need to be moving in the direction more rapidly of electric buses on, on the ballot for, for the replacement cycle, because you're right, we're getting, we're getting ever so close to 2035 being 10 years away.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
There are two libraries on our ballot. That really is beyond our control. So the law says that libraries within our district may send us a letter and ask to be on our ballot for funding. And if the community approves that, then they'll be on our tax levy for us to collect those funds and pass through to them. The Red Hook Public Library and the Tivoli Free Library are both on the ballot for what I would refer to as modest increases in their allocation. And then finally, student board member is on the ballot. For maybe 10 or 12 years, we've had a student board member non-voting, who sits at the table along with the board at board meetings and gives a student perspective on discussion. In order for us to continue that, the community is required to re-up it every two years, and this is the year that that would be required. Just a little bit more on the capital reserve. During the COVID years, when we had substantial reductions in our operation, we did generate some, some fund balance surpluses. And what we would like to be able to do with voter approval is to create a capital reserve fund with a magnitude of $5 million and a useful life of 10 years. And that, that capital reserve could be funded by current surplus in fund balance, as well as potential future surpluses in budget. We're not authorized to collect money simply for the purpose of passing into a capital reserve, but if there were to be surpluses, they could be moved into a capital reserve. And what that capital reserve would be for would be like a savings account for future capital needs of the district. So the next time that we have a capital need, and there will be a next time that we have a capital need, there would be some money already set aside for the purpose of funding that capital need, and it would not all have to come from new tax dollars. So the $5 million magnitude means $5 million once. So if you fill the fund partly, and then the voters approve using it, for example, you filled it to $2.5 million, and then that gets used, you can only fill it to $2.5 million again. You don't get to go all the way back to $5 million. And then the 10-year duration means that if there's money in that capital reserve at the end of 10 years, and it is not already allocated by the voters to a capital project, it automatically falls back into the regular fund balance, where it would support operation or, or tax levy. So we think that a capital reserve is a sensible financial planning tool, but, but the voters have to approve the, the existence of the reserve. The board can then fund the reserve, but the voters have to approve again for any spending out of the reserve, and then that reserve falls back to the general fund after 10 years if it's unused. And then, I think, we are at final thoughts. So as Janet articulated, we look at this budget as a budget that continues and enhances existing programs. We stress that it is $152,000 below the tax cap. And although the tax cap is a little bit unusual this year, we've articulated the reasons why, and this would really be a particularly difficult budget year for a contingent budget to happen because of the onset of the already-approved capital debt service. And with that, I would pause for any questions.
I would, I'll just take a moment to comment on my support for the capital reserve. We use reserve funds here in the village, and it's a nice way to, there are always times when you need something, like we now need a new garbage truck, and that will not be a small event, and so some of the capital reserve that we have will use to offset the rest of the cost. So just put in a pitch for the capital reserve. Anybody, anybody else have a question or comment?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I'm from the treasure. I think it's crazy you guys are going to be buying fossil fuel-powered buses. It's so short-sighted.
It is. You know, you're doing research. The time for research is over. I personally have no way voting for fossil fuel-powered buses, and I will strongly encourage everyone I know to vote against that proposal. So we also want to go on record saying it's kind of outrageous.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I would say, too, is we don't have any infrastructure in the school to sustain those right now, either. We don't have the charging station, we don't have the mechanics, all those things that come into play.
Yeah, that's not a force, you know- Yeah, that's not a force, you know, that should have been being planned a long time ago.
I also would just like to make note, I know everyone in the in the room, so I don't believe there's anyone here from either library to make a pitch for their increase in budget. So just confirming that there's no one, no one here to speak on behalf of the either library, either the Red Hook Public Library or a Tivoli Library. So just wanted to make that point. Anything else?
I just wanted to voice my support for the having the two pre-K classes, and I know it makes a huge difference to families like mine. I really appreciate it.
How many, what kind of waitlist do you, I know last year you had a much longer list of applicants than you were able to accommodate.
I think there may have been 40 to 45 on the list, and we accommodated 30. There is some additional money in the budget this year from the state in the state in the form of state aid for pre-K, but that was just adopted last week. So we're still investigating what the criteria for receiving that extra money would be. We also have some space challenges in the elementary school if we were to be contemplating another section of pre-K. So still still to come, but that money is new enough that we don't have our arms around yet what the requirements would be for implementing.
So you have two?
We have two currently.
And you're continuing with two next year?
The two are, the two we're continuing with.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Could I just ask, you didn't mention the IB program? Is that continuing as normal?
As normal.
Okay.
One of our goals is to increase the enrollment.
Right.
Not only with a full IB, but to have more students take those classes. We do have a lot of students that take our IB and AP. We're also researching dual enrollment, so increasing the amount of college classes through Dutchess Community College because the cost of credits is a lot cheaper in high school. So we're exploring that this coming school year. We'll hopefully have more information for you at this time next year of some of those classes.
Is there a forecast for total enrollment of the student population next year and rolling forward? Do you have a sense of what that looks like?
Yeah, the 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 total population K-12 continues to contract. Off the top of my head, we will graduate about probably just shy of 150 this year. The incoming kindergarten will probably be 90 or 95. So you do the math there, we'll probably, we'll probably contract by about 50 students. And it looks like that will be for the foreseeable future.
Unless a lot of families move into traditions or something.
We're okay with that.
All right. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the fact that you came to our meeting to present the budget.
I'll give you a little bit more of those.
Thank you. Really, really appreciate your, all of your efforts as well. We all benefit from the school district. Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is an extension of the Water Interconnect intermunicipal agreement. The original agreement was dated November 1, 1991. And you're gonna, you're gonna do my supplier things. Yes, thank you. It it actually lapsed. It was, it lapsed in November of 2021 because it was a 30-year agreement. And so we have in front of us, and what this agreement is, is there is an interconnect between the town and the village water systems. And the idea is that it's an emergency supply in either direction. And in order, and so this agreement just says that that sharing is allowed, and it articulates an easement for us and who owns the pieces. And the proposed amendment is to extend the term of the agreement until November 1, 2025. There's some aspect of the interconnect that is not working properly, and that is part of our WIA grant that we received. It's one of the four projects. And so this is a way to ensure that we have the proper ownership and easements in place in order to work on that project. I would like to make a motion, I don't think I don't have a resolution to it, just to make a motion to allow me to sign this contract if I can get a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. The next is a resolution to accept settlement of litigation, Vincent P. Zitz versus Village of Red Hook. This is related to the sewer project. Vincent P. Zitz is in the sewer use district, and there was a disagreement between Mr. Zitz and the village, and that has been resolved. And the settlement, you have the settlement in your packet. I have the settlement in my packet as well.
Is it here?
Sure. And?
Is it here?
Yes, it is. There's a, well, let me, let me not rush through. What the resolution says is whereas the Village of Red Hook has established a municipal system, sewer system to serve the the village, on February 8, 2016, the Board of Trustees of the Village, acting as lead agency, determined that the establishment of a municipal sewer system, including, among other things, the acquisition of easements and other interests with respect to septic tanks, laterals, and property access, would not result in any significant adverse environmental impact, and approved the costs of which are to be assessed upon the lands benefited. There's a map plan and report that was filed with the Office of the Village Clerk. And whereas to install the facilities as depicted on the map and plan, the village has attempted to acquire easements over certain properties, including the property at 6466 East Market Street, Red Hook owned by Vincent P. Zitz. Due to the objective of the sewer project to provide sewer service to the village's central business district, the geography and layout of the village, and the location of voluntary easements provided by other landowners in the service area, there are no feasible alternate locations for the installation of the sewer components within the sewer project area other than over said properties. A public hearing was held on August 14, 2018. Publication and notice to property owners was duly performed pursuant to its right to exercise eminent domain pursuant to 402B of the eminent domain procedure law hereby authorize the commencement of an appropriate proceeding against the property owner for the acquisition of the needed easements for the construction of the sewer project. Whereas on May 14, 2020, in order of the Supreme Court, Dutchess County dated May 12, 2020, vesting a permanent easement and temporary easement in the Village of Red Hook to a portion of the property pursuant to the eminent domain procedure law was entered in in the office of Dutchess County Clerk. And that said, the said lands were appropriated by filing a copy of a certain acquisition map and description in the office of the Dutchess County Clerk on July 29, 2020. The real property interest acquired is further described as a temporary easement for the duration of one year over the entirety of the aforementioned parcel for construction of the municipal sewer system, and two, a permanent 10-foot-wide easement extending across the parcel in an east-west direction as depicted on map number 2654A, together with a right of access. Whereas on October 26, 2020, Vincent P. Zitz filed a notice of claim in the Supreme Court, Dutchess County, seeking compensation of $125,000 for said easements, $25,000 for the value of the easements, and $100,000 in compensatory damages. Whereas on November 11, 2022, after no further action by Mr. Zitz, the village filed a demand for resumption of prosecution. And whereas thereafter, Mr. Zitz indicated that he was willing to settle the matter for $2,475, which was the original amount offered to him for the easements, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook, that Janice M. Gomez-Anderson of Council to Rodenhausen Chale and Polidaro LLP is authorized to execute and file the attached stipulation on behalf of the village, and be it further resolved that the village treasurer is authorized to issue a check to Vincent P. Zitz in the amount of $2,475 in full settlement of this claim. I need a motion to accept this resolution. So moved. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, the next, okay. The next item is related to our health insurance coverage. We have switched our health insurance coverage from MVP to CDP HP. And, and we, the difference in the health insurance plans, it just shifts where things are paid from. CDP HP has a higher deductible. However, the village covers the deductible amount for full-time employees who have health coverage through the village. And so the net of the costs is actually a savings to the village. At worst, it'll be the same as this year's cost. At best, it'll be, it'll be less. The renewal plan from MVP was a 6% increase in cost. So it is a benefit to the village. And, and I worked with all of the employees to confirm that there was no disruption in their coverage or their doctors. And so we made that change. The health insurance coverage is a benefit that is included in our two union contracts, and the union representative representatives requested that we have a memorandum of agreement that just codifies what we had agreed to in that the shift is being made and that the cost will continue to be covered as they were before. So you have a motion in your packets. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, can I have you explain one more time what we're doing? What's the difference between the?
Yes. And that I actually, I do, I have actual.
So we have the chart here of the.
And it also just might be, might be on my desk.
I have a copy here.
I can, I will show you the.
When I can look at Charlie's?
You know what? I got it. I got it.
No.
I knew I'd prepared for this. So the current, the plan that was in effect until the end of April is an MVP plan, metal level silver, that has a deductible, and it has 100% coverage after deductible. Then the CDP HP plan is also silver. It also has a deductible. But after the deductible is paid, there are copays. And so the, and for example, the single plan rate for the MVP coverage was $875.42 a month, and the CDP HP monthly rate is $765.91. So it's actually a reduction in the premium. The renewal for MVP, the single plan rate went up to $930.81. So looking at the the net, it should be a savings of 10%. But that, the the reason why we don't know exactly is it depends on how much of the deductible is used.
Okay. And the employees were okay with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. All the doctors, all the doctors, they either ran it through us to confirm that they were in the system, or they checked themselves. And and everyone's doctors are in the same system. It is also, I don't know how, I don't know how long ago it was, but CDP HP used to, we have switched back and forth.
Yeah.
Patrick, do you remember when you, when we were on CDP HP last? Was it like seven years ago or so?
Yeah, I just switched back. So we were original CDP HP, he had the same.
Yeah.
Board had the same conversation then, pushed MVP because of the rate.
Yeah, it's nice to have competition.
Great.
That covers. So that's the, and.
Thank you for clarifying. I have it. I just wanted to.
We both found it together. So the resolution is number 14. The Village Red Hook and the United Public Service Employees Union are parties to a collective bargaining agreement which expires May 31, 2024. Article 12 of the CBA provides for health insurance coverage. The village seeks to change medical health insurance carriers from MVP to CDP HP effective May 1, 2023, which will result in an overall reduction in cost for the village. Because the deductible amounts increase under the new plan, US, the union has requested updated language reflecting this change in the attached memorandum of agreement. Now therefore be it resolved, and that language is, "The village shall provide to the unit members health insurance coverage, CDP HP, HDEPO silver, to become effective May 1, 2023. The village shall provide each member with a health savings account in in an amount sufficient to cover all deductibles annually. Additionally, the village further agrees to contribute to each member's HSA, an amount significant to cover all co-insurance costs, copays, prescription payments, prescription costs, and any other additional costs to the member that is currently covered under the current MVP Liberty HDHP silver plan. Anyone hired into the police department after December 1, 2017 shall contribute 10% to their health insurance premiums. There shall be no other charges without negotiation with the union. This language supersedes the corresponding language agreed to in a prior MOA dated September 3, 2015." So that, let's see. So now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook, by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the memorandum of agreement with UPSU regarding the change in health insurance carriers agreement attached here too, with an insubstantial, with any insubstantial changes as approved by the mayor. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Steve, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Did I give you yours back?
Um.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to establish establish a lieutenant position in the Red Hook Police Department. I'm going to move that to farther farther down in the agenda. So skipping that right now, we are going to go to resolution to re-levy unpaid utility bills, which you're going to hand me. Yep, I got that. All right. This is resolution number 15. Whereas the Village of Red Hook has $15,265.67 delinquent utility water and sewer accounts in the amount of $12,981.6 for water and $2,294.61 for sewer, remaining unpaid, including late fees, from January 2022 to December 2022 utility billings. And whereas Resolution 4 of 2022 affirms reimbursement for snow removal by the village at the rate of $2 per linear foot if a property owner neglects to clear the adjoining sidewalk within 24 hours after a snow ice storm, as per Village Code 165-1, during the 2022-2023 winter season, the village conducted property maintenance in the form of snow removal in the amount of $4,096. Now therefore be it resolved that no further payments will be accepted after May 3, 2023, and any and all unpaid utility accounts in property maintenance, snow removal, for the year 2022 will be re-leveyed onto the 2023-2024 village taxes.
I think one adjustment, please, I'd like to change the title to utility bills.
And property maintenance. So the resolution is called to re-levy unpaid utility bills and property maintenance. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we have budget adjustments. I did those. I should know those. And this is a resolution for budget adjustments to Village General Sewer, Water and Sewer Funds.
Number 16.
It is number 16.
Hmm.
For the general fund, increases in the clerk fees to to reflect actual, and also in the rental fees from the cell towers, that is higher than budgeted. So that's reflecting the actual number. Under the expense line, law miscellaneous adding $1,500 to that budget. That's primarily due to the work that was done related to an employee. work that was done related to an employee issue that we discussed that we approved in December or so. The well in under the welding line item 1640.41, we had not been receiving invoices and we did get a statement and got all all cleared up. So this is adding $500 to that item. I'll just add that the welding that is done is done by our highway supervisor and we are very fortunate to have him. So this is very productive money to be spending. Police utilities. It's a little higher than we budgeted, so just putting in $612 there. The maintenance of street fuel cost is a little higher than budget, so putting in $1,000 there. And then community beautification, which is where the cost of the trees for the Village Green goes. And there were some additional purchases there, so that puts in the $1,550. And that's covered by the increase on the revenue side. So no change to the total. For the water fund, the single audit cost is higher than anticipated, so that goes up by 6,000. Water repairs will not be as high as budgeted, so we're taking it out of that fund. For the sewer fund, there's a taxes and assessment on municipal property of $263.99. And in the spirit of wanting to put it in the line item that it should be in, needing to make other adjustments so that we can create that line item. And that leads to now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Red Hook amends the general water and sewer fund budgets as shown in the schedules above. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or question?
Just one quick question. So for the additional tower rental fee, is that kind of a one-time variance or something forecast to be ongoing?
It is. I believe what it is is that it was an increase that was included in our in our contracts that I just hadn't accounted for in the budget. So yes, it should be ongoing. Any other questions? Oops. Didn't mean to do that. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, just making a note that the next meeting is the Village Workshop, which is May 25th. And the next Village Board meeting is June 5th. And now we move into committee reports, starting with the Treasurer's Report. Lori Urban.
Good evening. So here's the Treasurer's Report for the meeting tonight, May 8th. Our account balances as of April 30th, 2023 are general fund $776,285.19. Water fund $336,577.56. Payroll clearing account $32,948.19. Sewer fund $596,700.45. Hard Scrabble $9,085.60. The Village Green $7,674.32. Our health insurance account balance is $3,587.60. And we have petty cash of $60.83. The following are the reserve checking balances. Fire department $5,051.89. Police $14,638.97. USDA $134,527.76. Highway $26,281.56. Snow reserve $3,291.39. Tower reserve $17,775.73. Unemployment $4,560.62. The court reserve is $3,310.57. And office reserve of $976.5. Lastly, our monthly expenses for the month of April. General fund $114,335.2. Water fund $63,546.39. Payroll clearing account $1,957.78. And the sewer fund of $2,728.76.
Thank you. A motion to accept the Treasurer's Report.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And I am going to, so I don't forget, I'm going to do at this moment, I'm going to do a motion to pay bills after audit. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And hey, I'm learning after two years. For those who of you who haven't gone through the invoices, they're on the second floor in the conference room, which is actually a nice space to go through that. The other thing that I wanted to mention, at the last meeting when in April, on April 10th, when we adopted the budget, I did not have the tax rate. And I have the tax rate, which is $5.676980. 5.676980 is our tax rate. So just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you, Lori, for your fine work as treasurer. We are grateful to have you. Okay, now I have a variety of reports that I am reading. First one is the police report. For the month of April, we had 268 incidents. 157 were in the Village of Red Hook. 96 were in the Town of Red Hook and 15 were in the Village of Tivoli. There were 113 water tower security checks. Uniform traffic tickets, there were 85. 38 were in the Village of Red Red Hook. 37 were in the Town of Red Hook and 10 were in the Village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were nine in the Village of Red Hook, two in the Village of Tivoli, and none in the Town of Red Hook. And arrests, there were four, three in the Village of Red Hook and one in the Town of Red Hook. And then there is the fire department. I did just get the April list of incidents from the fire department just about a couple hours ago. And so there were 21 incidents in the Village of Red Hook in the month of April. At the next meeting, I'll have them broken out by type. Generally EMS calls are the most the the most prevalent. And outside of the Village of Red Hook, there were 52 incidents for the fire company. So that's that piece. Okay, sewer project. Let me start with that one. I believe I mentioned this last time. I will mention it many times again. Substantial completion was achieved for the sewer project on March 30th, 2023. Woo-hoo! Restoration and punch list items remain to be completed prior to final completion. Progress meeting number 37 was 37, 34 was held on April 14th, 2023 in the Village Red Hook Building. And via telephone conference call, Carver, C3ND, and the Village of Red Hook attended. There were a whole number of tasks that were completed. The task scheduled going forward was blacktop blacktop seeding, redoing sidewalks as the canopy structure over the electric panel of the wastewater treatment plant. And then there was wiring at One House 7545 North Broadway that needed to be confirmed that it was changed from 10 gauge to 8 gauge. And I'm not going to read the whole the whole report. It will be online. But there are a couple of outstanding items. The soap factory tank needs to be resolved. That tank is actually going to be installed, I believe, next week. Final hookup probably be a couple weeks later because there are a few parts that are that are on order. Firehouse Plaza, there was a discussion about the paving. They're going to do paving per contract. And the manhole cover needs to be lowered. And again, a couple of other, probably the biggest is USDA Jessica De Dominic made a substantial completion site visit on Monday, April 10th, as scheduled. Mayor Smythe toured her around. She was able to obtain the photos needed from her visit. That's important because USDA provides some of the funding for this project. And so there are a number of incomplete items that are being worked on as we speak. And we are in the final phases of this project. We are now shifting to the operations of a sewer system. And going forward, Kim Bradley Rickard will be reporting on the sewer system operations. The my report on the water system, actually, Charlie, I don't do I haven't seen. Did you have a report or do you want me to report on what I have?
I've got a report.
Oh, you've got those those reports. Well, I'll let you do those and then I'll fill in if you haven't done that. Okay.
Okay.
Highway Department, I did the Highway Department. In the future, Milcorco will be doing that, but the Village Highway Department resumed resumed brush pickup this month. Pickup of brush leaves and yard debris is scheduled for the first week of every month, pending weather conditions and scheduling. It takes more than one day to get all the way around the village. That is why it's not just Monday. Also, I'll note that garbage is taking longer than usual because our garbage truck is not working. And it actually costs too much to repair it, so we're in the process of getting pricing for a whole new garbage truck. More on that soon. But for brush pickup, pickup is scheduled for once a month through the fall. There was I forgot to check, but I don't think there was any revenue for generated from the sale of scrap metal for the month of April. Does that sound right? That doesn't sound right. There we did get some. We did not. I think we get I think we got some recently. In any case, we will we will have it all all clarified for the next meeting, but fiscal year 2023, we have generated at least $3,291 in revenue. Since the inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $47,154.46 has been generated. Proceeds from this program go towards purchasing tools and equipment for the Village Highway Water and Materials Management Departments. Residents and businesses interested in interested in donating scrap metal may contact Village Highway Department or the Clerk's Office. Highway Department personnel are available to help to assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. This is a wonderful program. That's a win-win for everyone. A good one to highlight. I believe there's a thanks to former Deputy Mayor Kavolchuk for that one. And I have my library report. You don't have a copy of that, do you? You can see how prepared I am. Nope, it's not that's. Got it. Thank you. All right, now is my library report. Trustee Kirval, the appointed library liaison to the Red Hook Public Library, joyfully welcomed the newest addition to her family in early April. I am covering her duties as liaison for the time being. Fortunately, that newest member has come to visit us here in in Village Hall. Thank you. We enjoy those visits. I'd like to provide a little clarity around the relationship between the Village Board and the Red Hook Public Library and the role of library liaison. The Red Hook Public Library is legally classed as a municipal library chartered chartered to serve the village. The Village Board has the legal responsibility by the Red Hook Public Library's charter of electing Red Hook Public Library board members. The library gets its funding from the town and the school district. Town residents voted on and passed a 414 proposal proposition in 2011 to add $225,000 onto town tax bills to be collected by the town and passed on to the Red Hook Public Library. That annual number remains the same today. The school district voted on and passed a Section 259 proposition in 2004 to add 25,000 onto the school tax bills to be collected by the school district and passed on to the Red Hook Public Library. There have been several subsequent Section 259 proposition votes to increase the funding via the school district. It is currently at 196,400. There's a separate resolution as you heard earlier on the school ballot to be voted on this coming May 16 to increase this Red Hook Public Library funding by an additional 12,000, making it 206,400. And we all as voters have have an opportunity to say yea or nay to that increase. The Village of Red Hook does not provide any direct funding to the Red Hook Public Library. However, as the Red Hook Public Library is legally chartered for the village, the library liaison is an important part of maintaining transparency and accountability for the disbursement disbursement of tax dollars and has been a standard role assigned to a village board member. Trustee Kirval was appointed to be library liaison first by Mayor Ed Blundell in April 2021 and subsequently by me. Trustee Kirval fulfills her role as liaison and her other roles as trustee with integrity and respect for the village's accountability to its residents. The Red Hook Public Library Board of Trustees provided a written response to the Village Library Report that I read at our April 10th Village Board Meeting. I've attached that letter to my report. The Red Hook Public Library Board's letter states that there were inaccurate and or incomplete statements in trustee Kirval's report and did not represent a fair or complete picture. The board liaison reports cover activities done and decisions made since the previous Village Board Meeting that are publicly available. The Red Hook Public Library Board's response included several updates that either provide additional information about things that happened after April 10th or that offer explanations while acknowledging the veracity of trustee Kirval's statements. One specific item I'd like to comment on here. The characterization of the library's past financial management is based on observation of inconsistencies, including attributions of funding to and from the village. Since the April report, I have addressed this concern directly with the interim manager, Teager. I would like to note, however, that the March 2023 budget versus actual document prepared for the library's April Board Meeting still shows irregularities. Specifically, the Red Hook Public Library is selling garbage tags on behalf of the village for which we are very grateful. Currently, the accounting for those funds do not match the actual records and receipts of the village. I also want to clarify that I am not saying that the library is not providing all the funding that they should to the village. It is just that their accounting is does not appear to match our numbers that we have. I actually had a conversation today with interim manager Teager as we continue to resolve these inconsistencies. We agree on the monies back and forth. Well, the money, they collect money in payment for garbage tags and they turn that money over to the village. It just is not being reflected accurately or clearly on the library financial reports. So it's really just a matter of reporting. The actual system is working properly. While the Village Board is grateful for the additional information, it does not negate the April report's statements. It is my hope that the library board will see these comments as opportunities to look at their processes and procedures to find areas for improvement. We all have the opportunity to make improvements. I attended the April 20th Library Board Meeting. The Red Hook Public Library Board approved a retainer agreement for legal counsel, Robert Schofield of Whitman, Osterman, and Hanna, who has experience representing public libraries. He will help to ensure the Red Hook Public Library Board is following proper procedures and disclosures. We all have a vested interest in following proper procedures and maintaining clear transparency when public tax dollars are being spent. The board discussed finding a human resources consultant to review their hiring process, which is subject to civil service law. Names were shared. This process is ongoing. There was no report on the search for a new library manager. It was mentioned that per civil service, the temporary manager can stay up to four months. The policy committee is working on many aspects of employee employment policies. The committee's report is now posted on the Red Hook Public Library website under the About section, then Board of Trustees. It was noted that progress has been made on putting many documents online for public access. That work is ongoing and I can attest that there are many more documents on their website than there were even just a month ago. The Red Hook Library is an important part of the Red Hook community and we welcome the opportunity to continue to work with the Red Hook Public Library. And that is my library report. I have a few other reports. Turning into Brent. Red Hook Together meets the first Thursday of the month. They met last Thursday, May 4th, at noon via Zoom. Eli Duker, co-director of the Bard Center for Environmental Sciences and Humanities, was the speaker. He has been working on a community-based research project in Ulster County focusing on indoor air and water quality in emergency in emergency and subsidized housing, temporary housing and other housing that is deteriorating with increasing soil dampness. The work is hoping to expand our work into Dutchess County, specifically vulnerable housing areas in Northern Dutchess. The June meeting will be on Thursday, June 1st, at 5:30 PM at Mill Road Elementary, 3 to 5 side. This will be a general networking meeting. The Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee, they met on Wednesday, April 12th and April 26th here at Village Hall. I was not able to. I was not able to attend and I've not seen the meeting minutes. I will follow up and report at the next meeting. I did not find them on the town website either and I may just have been looking in the wrong spot. Village of Red Hook Communications Committee. The Communication Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at 1:30 in Village Hall Conference Room. This month, we did not meet in person due to trustee Kirval's family leave and member Lauren Cunningham's opening of her new store, The Corner Counter. If you haven't been yet, highly encourage you to go. I met, I met with Bard intern Eve Campbell to work on newsletters. The April newsletter was issued on April 20, still April. The May newsletter was issued on May 5. We have 529 email addresses that are currently receiving the newsletter. We have a 50 to 67% open rate. The Village of Red Hook Hardscrabble Events Committee. The Events Committee meets every third Monday of each month at 6:00 PM at Village Hall. We met in April on the 17th. Planning continues for Hardscrabble Day, planned for September 23 this year, 23rd, '23, so it's a good number to remember. The music team is actively working on booking bands. We discussed the program elements for the morning and afternoon. We ordered picnic tables, three have been sponsored. The committee is purchasing three more. If anyone is interested in sponsoring a picnic table, please email the Events Committee at events@redhooknyvillage.org. Sponsored picnic tables will have a plaque added with three lines of your choice engraved on it. The food team has already booked a couple of vendors and actively working on more. The postcard for the upcoming Neighbor's Night on May 19 has been printed using a list of all registered voter households, we have created mailing labels, and put them on the postcards. The postcards should go out in the mail later this week. Red Hook Responds has shared their menu for the evening and it sounds delicious. I think it ends with a berry crisp, as I recall. We will have picnic tables for the event, which will be in the village parking lot. We hope you all will attend. And the Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee meets the first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM in Village Hall Conference Room. There was no meeting of the Human Relations Committee last week. I think that's all that I have to, to share. So trustee Lang, it's you.
Yes. Let me see. So I have a materials management report for the month of April. Let me just go through that. We collected .99 tons of commingled, .43 tons of cardboard, and .92 tons of paper for a total recycling collection of 2.34. And we also collected 7.92 tons of garbage. We sold $3,493 worth of tags. And the total costs for that garbage disposal and fuel surcharge was $950.69. And we had another month without any contaminated recycling, so success. And thank you to everybody for being careful about their recycling and, you know, meeting all the limitations that come with that. I also have the Water Systems Operation Report for the month of April. So the water treatment facility treated 6,707,200 total gallons, which was an average of 223,600 gallons per day. This is a fairly average monthly consumption, I mean daily consumption, it's well within the sort of normal variation. We also sent off three samples for bacteriological testing and they all came back absent, which is always reassuring. And during the month of April, the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium hyperchlorite, which amounts to an average daily use of 2.4 gallons per day. And actually, the mayor and I took a tour of our water treatment facility last.
April 14.
Yeah, oh, that was a long time ago. Look at that. But there are a few items that we are following up on regarding sort of improving conditions at the water treatment facility. And did you want to add on as far as other?
The only, the only other, we have a list of things that we had discussed as, for improvements.
Yeah.
I had adding a separate door to the chlorine room to reduce some of the corrosion, replacing corroded van hangars in the waste, in the water treatment plant, and then removing the bladder tank in the pump room that is not and will not be used. And we talked about the two known leaks that are remaining in the water system, one at St. John's and West Market Street and one in front of Ague. And we did discuss briefly whether or not we should put a fence around the solar panels that the fire department, the fire department's solar panels. Those, that was, that was what was on my list. I would just add, it was fun to see, we have framed old water maps from the 1930s that are hanging on the wall of the bunker, which I believe is to the old water treatment plant. So that's pretty cool. And then it was just the status of the, we are.
Well, I did, there was one other thing. So now that I am taking on duties as liaison with the Sawkill Warisher Community. And I got an email, they're having a, planning to have a meeting on Tuesday, the 16th, which I will try and attend.
Great. Good deal. All right, I think that I covered, did I cover everything? Mel Corca, is there anything I missed?
You did, other than the village will have a booth at Apple Blossom Day this weekend.
Oh, right.
Which is exciting.
It is exciting. Apple Blossom, this Saturday.
There'll be a bunch of different committees.
Starts at 10 AM, right?
Yeah.
And I know, I know that Red Hook Responds will be there. I've seen the menu, it looks delicious. It's a different menu than for Neighbor's Night. And I believe Cider Brothers will be there and Mighty Donuts will be there.
We just have to cross our fingers for good weather.
It looks good, looks good so far.
It's great.
Great. And trustee Bradley Reichert is not here. I spoke about the Sewer Department. She did send in a report on the Village Green. Thank you. Which I will go ahead and read. The Village Green Committee had their annual Spring Arbor Day planting. The committee and volunteers met at Abraham's Park on Saturday, April 22. Chair of the committee, David Pearson, welcomed volunteers and talked about the long history of being Tree City USA. We have been a Tree City USA 21 years. That's why we have a nice flag out here on Prince Street. The importance of Arbor Day and tree planting. Dave read the annual Arbor Day proclamation declaring April 22 Arbor Day 2023. In preparation for the planting, holes were dug Friday by Michelle Decker. And it says, and me, so that must be Kim. Jake from the Highway Department dropped off mulch bags. Volunteers were instructed how to properly place the tree into the corresponding hole, fill it with dirt and lay the turf back upside down. If you ever want to learn how to plant a tree, Dave Pearson is a good one and volunteering, volunteering to help do this work will give you practical experience. That Saturday, 10 trees were planted, two in Abraham's Park, two in Memorial Park, one on Church Street and five on Firehouse Lane. We had five planters to start two teams. Kathy, Kathy Pearson, Brian, whose last name I know, but I can't remember at this moment, Ash Reichert and Neville, Neville Smythe and Dave Pearson. A couple other volunteers showed up later to help finish planting. Chris Coon of the Highway Department watered the trees later. The planting, we had less, less volunteers than, than usual, but the planting went, went very well. Dave and Kim will be meeting middle of the month, middle of each month, no, middle of the month, to discuss potential collaboration projects and how to get more volunteers and members involved in the committee. If you are interested in joining the Village Green Committee or want to know more information, you can email David Pearson, who's the chair, or Kim, trustee Kim Bradley Reichert. Thank you. All right, trustee Appenzeller, you're up.
Okay, so first we have the monthly Building Department Report. It looks like it was a busy month with nine building permits issued. There were two certificates of occupancy issued and six certificates of compliance and four municipal searches. There was one order to remedy for an abandoned vehicle, which was subsequently withdrawn. There were no stop work orders or court appearances and there were six fire inspections that took place during the month. And there were two complaints about garbage issues, which were both remedied. Planning Board Actions, at the April 13 Planning Board Meeting, a site plan application for three St. John's Street was withdrawn from the agenda. Signage approval was granted to seven East Market Street and a public hearing was set for a site plan for 7373-7375 South Broadway. That hearing will be May 11 at 7:00 PM. And on the Zoning Board of Appeals, there was a continuation for the interpretation and appeal for an application for 25 Fisk Street, related to what we heard about earlier. The public hearing was held and closed and the application tabled to the upcoming May 25th meeting, which will take place at 7:00 PM. And there was also a public hearing set for interpretation and appeal of an application for 26 Elizabeth Street, also set for the May 25th meeting. That is it for the Building Department, for the Public Spaces Initiative. Going forward, I will be joining them for their regular monthly meetings and they have an exciting event coming up, free community event, May 20, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Community Center, 59 Fisk Street. The focus of that is a native flower festival, so there will be activities for kids gardening, advice from a master gardener, something I know I can certainly benefit from, and everything you need to know to start your own pollinator garden. And along with those great activities, there will be art from local artists and live music by local musicians. And.
Before you go on, I can just mention, and I mentioned this in my, in my newsletter, there is some discussion of something called No Mow May. And there are those in the environmental community who are pointing out that just not mowing in May, what, what happens on June 1 and it actually can make it worse rather than make it better. So it would be even better to plant some native plants, have, have a pollinator garden. So this is the perfect opportunity in May to come to this event on the 20th and learn about all the good plants you can plant that can be helpful to pollinators throughout the season.
Proliferation of those done well would be beneficial for the environment and as well as a fun project to do at your home. And then the last item for the Red Hook Zoning Review, you know, two of the items we discussed earlier, the sign ordinance and the animal husbandry is part of an ongoing effort to better align the body of zoning code to the evolving needs of our village and its residents.
Oh. I think the money, the money, it's the dollars at the bottom, right?
Yep, yeah, sorry for the omission of that. So in relation to the Building Department, for all of the inspections, permits and so forth, there was a total of $2,275 in fees collected.
All right, the next item, I would like to have us go into executive session to discuss negotiations with the police union regarding, regarding rates related to the lieutenant position. So we will go into executive session. I do not expect that this will take very long and we will be back. If you would wait, if you would wait also, because we have business on the other side. I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we will retire to executive session and we will be back shortly. May I have a motion to reopen the public session?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now going to proceed with the item of regular business, resolution to establish a police position in the Red Hook Police Department.
Number 17.
Number 17. And I, I think it's highly, highly fitting that the school leadership was here today making positive comments about the work that you all do in the schools. So I have a resolution regarding addition of a police lieutenant position to the police department and appointments. Whereas, the Village Board has determined that to improve operations and efficiency within Village Hall and best serve the public, it is appropriate to create the position of police lieutenant, of the position of full-time police lieutenant. Whereas the village has, it's, it's in the, I updated it in the system. Whereas the village has consulted with the Dutchess County Department of Human Resources and any required documentation has been or will be submitted for creation of the position of full-time lieutenant. And whereas the Village Board has discussed the creation of the position of full-time police lieutenant and would like to create the position as permitted under applicable New York state law. And whereas the Village Board desires to temporarily appoint Sergeant Patrick Hildenbrand to the position of full-time police lieutenant upon the creation effective June 1, 2023. And whereas, the Village Board desires to temporarily appoint Officer Travis Sterrett to the position of full-time police sergeant effective June 1, 2023. And now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board hereby creates the position of full-time police lieutenant. And be it further resolved that the Village Board sets the salary for the position of full-time police lieutenant and full-time police sergeant as per the proposed memorandum of agreement with the United Public Service Employees Union. And be it further resolved that the Village Board temporarily appoint Sergeant Patrick Hildenbrand to the position of full-time police lieutenant upon creation effective June 1, 2023. And be it further resolved that the Village Board temporarily appoints Police Officer Travis Sterrett to the position of full-time police sergeant effective June 1, 2023. And be it further resolved that the Village Board will make the appropriate modifications to the 2023 adopted budget with a separate budget modification resolution. And be it further resolved that all other benefits and pay rates will be as stated in the collective bargaining agreement dated June 1, 2021 and as negotiated with the applicable union representative. And be it further resolved that the Village Board authorizes Mayor Smythe or her designee to execute and file any appropriate documentation to effectuate the terms of this resolution.
Can I make one correction? It's the 2023, 2024 adopted budget?
Yes, so correction that the modifications that we will be making is to the 2023, 2024 adopted budget. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie. Opportunity for discussion, I, I guess I would just like to make a couple of comments. One is, this has been in discussion for a while and I see this, we, we took our time and I think we did it the right way. And I just want to thank both Officer Hildenbrand and Officer Sterrett, who are here with us. Thank you for your service. Thank you for the quality of what you do. I think I've said this to you, but I'll say it also publicly, that I believe that the department that you've created is the type of community policing that we are all looking for frankly around the country. So thank you for that. And this is also an acknowledgement of the additional contracts that you have earned because of the quality of the work that you do. We have contracts with the Village of Tivoli, with the town of Red Hook, and as, as we heard earlier, with the school, with the school district. So, so thank you, thank you for that, thank you for that work. Any other questions or comments? Actually, the other thing that I forgot to just point out, at the next meeting, I will have a resolution for where we are going to take the money from. We have two possibilities, actually, we have several possibilities, but one, there is fund balance included in the budget that would more than cover the increase in cost in the 2023, 2024 budget, which for the record is estimated to be $10,345. That will fluctuate based on the amount of overtime, that includes an assumption of overtime. The other option is we had money in the budget for. The other option is, we had money in the budget for the software package of Lexipol, which is an software system that, I'm going to say this all wrong, but it's related to the police policies. And the ongoing rate is about $4,000 or $5,000, but the upfront setup is more like $10,000 to $14,000. We could choose to, we do have ARPA funding, and that setup could be funded through ARPA, so that would be another place to take that funding. So we'll have a discussion about that, and we'll make the actual change in our next budget. Any other questions, discussion?
Just congratulations after.
Yes.
Well, you got to let us, you got to let us vote first, though. Let me say, all in favor, and let's do a roll call vote. Trustee Appenzeller.
Aye, and thank you for your service.
Trustee Lang?
Aye.
And trustee Kirval?
Aye.
And Mayor Smythe is an aye. Now, it's official.
I appreciate your time. I know you have a lot on your agenda, as you can hear about the board meeting and the sewer project, you had a lot. I appreciate you recognizing what we do. And I've always had that motto, even when I first met the mayor, you know, I had, when Dallas was mayor for many years, I gave a comb card to that. And you can ask anyone if they were in this room, I've always said, we police for people, not on people. And you've heard Dr. Warren say it earlier today, like, we are, we are a role model and a platform for other school districts to follow on how we run our SRO program. I see this young lady every single day, say hi to everyone in the mornings. The relationships that we have created go beyond just being in the school. You know, we have many officers that came through here that have moved on to other agencies. They all have excelled in their agencies quickly. I take pride in, one, I supervise them. Two, he trained them. You know, he trained the majority of them through field training on the road, how to handle situations, how to handle calls. We deal with so many different situations in our police department. I say it all the time, we told you everything that we did, you probably sleep there for a night, right? But the biggest thing we get is big support from the community because we are here. They do sleep better at night, they see what we do. In the school, like Dr. Warren said, I mean, on a daily basis, we have 2,000 people, between students and faculty, that we are responsible for. And our SRO program is successful. We have talented people in those positions. I'm confident in the training that we do, the safety plans that we have in place. We were countless hours on the phone, all day, all night. We are always in contact with each other. It never shuts off. But that's okay, because, you know, I have children in the school, you know, I'm sitting there very patiently. But it's important to us. Every single thing that we do here is important to us. Obviously, that has shown over time, and I appreciate you guys recognizing that.
Thank you. Let's make sure that girl gets her homework done. She's out late on a school night.
Yeah, she has to ask it all the time in the age.
Oh, there you go. So the last item on our agenda is actually approving the memorandum of agreement with the United Public Service Employees Union. Well, yes, you do. You have it now. It's even, oh, it's for you, so you can have it. Okay, I can have that. So I will just go through, hopefully, just the highlights. Whereas the Village of Red Hook and the United Public Service Employees Union for the police department are parties to a collective bargaining agreement dated June 1, 2021. Whereas the village board created the position of full-time police lieutenant on May 8th, 2023. Whereas the village and the union have engaged in negotiations concerning the hourly rate schedule for the position of full-time police lieutenant. Now therefore be it resolved, now therefore, it is hereby agreed between the union and the village as follows, that effective June 1, 2023, the full-time lieutenant officer hired to initially fill the position effective June 1, 2023, will receive at hire the rate of $41.14 per hour. After completion of one year, the rate would increase to $43.05 per hour. After the completion of two years, the rate would increase to $44.96 per hour. And after the completion of three years, the rate would increase to $46.86 per hour. The sergeant officer hired to initially fill the full-time sergeant position opening effective June 1, 2023, will receive at hire the rate of $32.30 per hour. After completion of one year, the rate would increase to $33.94 per hour. After completion of two years, the rate would increase to $35.58 per hour. And after completion of three years, the rate would increase to $37.22 per hour. This replaces the full-time sergeant pay scale in the current CBA. Nothing in this MOA will constitute a past practice or binding process. The rest is legalese that says, this is it, this is the only thing that we're adding, and that all other terms and conditions of the CBA remain in full force and effect. The terms of this MOA, let's see, subject to ratification by the Village Board of Trustees. So I would like to make a motion to accept this memorandum of agreement and authorize me to sign said agreement, which I think I'm authorized through the resolution, but belts and suspenders.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? I will make a note that we did do a certain review of comparable. It's very hard to compare because other police departments don't do what our police department does, but we all believe that these are fair rates of pay for the positions that we have. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call again. Trustee Appenzeller?
Aye.
Trustee Lang?
Aye.
Trustee Kirval?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. And I may...
One thing, Mayor, I think I have a memory of Jay Trapp, because he used to sit right there. Seventeen years ago, he was one of the board members that hired me. And funny, because he, after he had all the discussion, go on, become a full-time officer of the full-time, he said, one thing you have to do your entire career, I said, what's that? He's like, you have to just always smile when you talk to people. He said, no problem, guys. And even when I saw him, he would text me once in a while, he texted me about a few weeks ago. He lives on Lake Murray. That's one thing. Is he one of the guys that hired me full-time? So I want to say that. You know, Brad.
That's a great memory. And that's something we can all do, is to smile when you're talking to people. So, thank you, Jay. Any other general business? This is an opportunity for public comment. Anybody like to make a comment? We'll take that as a no. We have one final piece of business. Anyone like to make that motion?
How about the one with the newborn at home?
Oh. The last piece of business.
Yes.
Brent's not here.
I don't remember how you say it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
You're going to have to, that should be seared in your brain.
Sorry.
A second? A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Well, and thank you, Mel Corca, for being here. We know that sleep is at a premium these days, but thank you for your efforts.